Call the order for the planning commission, April 6th, 2023. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance. Luke, if you could do the roll call for us?
Yes. Pearson.
Here.
Willenbrink.
Here.
Zalarsky.
Here.
Campbell.
Present.
Tiata. Absent. And McCollough.
Here.
Next order of business is the approval of minutes. Anyone have any corrections or changes to make to the minutes from last meeting?
None from me.
Nope.
Ask for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all businesses none, so the new business, the first public hearing of Dave Kirschner at 6238 50th Street North, a conditional use permit for an oversized accessory structure. Luke, report.
Thank you, and the location of this request, it's on the north side of 50th Street, northeast of its, where it merges with Georgia Boulevard. Should have a map here on the screen here, just a moment. The size of the property is just under half an acre. And the conditional use permit, or CUP as I'll refer to it throughout the presentation here, is for an oversized accessory structure, and this is a garden shed. The zoning for the site is R2. And per the R2 zoning districts, accessory structures are limited to 170 square feet, and the proposed garden shed is 484 square feet. So exceptions to the size limit are allowed through the CUP approval process. And just for reference, CUPs, they run with the land versus running with the property owner. So here is a look at the applicant's site plan. The proposed garden shed is on the west side of the house, closer to the Gateway Trail. And again, the shed is approximately 484 square feet. Here is an image of the rendering. Just to be clear, this is a proposed rendering here of the garden shed. It's actually a pretty good image here. The house is existing, the garden shed is proposed, so it has not been built yet. CUPs are subject to certain review criteria that is found in the city's ordinance, and here's just a quick summary of the review criteria that we must use in our evaluation. So compliance with the comp plan, compatibility of use with the zoning, no nuisances generated, no traffic congestion or parking issues created. The use must be adequately served by public services, no excessive costs incurred for public services or infrastructure, minimal impacts to the environment and natural features. And then there's additional review criteria for oversized accessory structures, and there's just four of those. The lot cannot be further subdivided with the building on site, no pole barn, building construction, no door is to exceed 10 feet in height, and no commercial or industrial uses are to occur within the structure. So staff finds that the CUP meets the review criteria of the ordinance as detailed in the staff report on file. So staff recommends approval of the request subject to the following conditions, and there's just two of them here. The accessory structure shall meet setback in height requirements, and then number two is the applicant obtain a building permit for the use. So a reminder that this is a public hearing, and the applicant is here in attendance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions before I open the public hearing?
Confused, you kept on saying proposed.
Yes. So if we... There we go, thank you. So the garden shed is proposed, just this image, it looks really good, you know, it almost looks like it's...
That's what, um, if you had me there, I'm sorry, but just, okay, that's fine. Nice job.
So yes, it has not been built at this time, so.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing?
Nope.
I open the public hearing now on the conditional use permit for 6238 50th Street. Does anyone in the audience have any questions? Anyone have any questions of the applicant? Just to be clear, any other questions for people in the audience? I close the public hearing, bring it back here. And I guess at that point, I look for a motion.
I'll make the motion to recommend approval of the CUP for an oversized accessory structure at 6238 50th Street North.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, motion passes. Next is a public hearing for Mark Sodley at 1117 Greystone Avenue North, the conditional use permit for an oversized accessory structure. Luke?
Thank you. So the location of this site is on the east side of Greystone Avenue, just north of 11th Street. This is a similar request to the last one. It's a CUP for an oversized accessory structure, and in this case, it is for a replacement garage. The zoning of this site is R2, and per the zoning code, detached garages are allowed to be up to 1,000 square feet, whereas the applicant here is requesting to replace the garage with a 1,232 square foot garage. That is also approximately three feet taller than the dwelling. And there is an ordinance requirement that the garage cannot be taller than the dwelling. But similar to the last request, exceptions to the size limits are allowed through the CUP process. So here's a look at the garage renderings. The garage will, again, assume the same footprint as the existing garage. It will extend a little bit further back into the rear of the property. CUPs are subject to certain review criteria of the ordinance, and I had mentioned those for the previous request, and those are the same review criteria that we use here for this request. So staff finds that the CUP review criteria of the ordinance has been satisfied for this request as detailed in the staff report on file, and staff recommends approval of this request subject to the following conditions. Number one, the accessory structure shall meet setback requirements, and then number two, the applicant obtain a building permit for the use. The applicant is here in attendance, and otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions first before we open the meeting?
I do have a quick question. So when we're looking at square footage, we're just looking at the footprint of the building, not total occupiable square footage?
That's right.
Okay.
Any other questions first? Okay, I open the public hearing for Mark Sodley, 1117 Greystone Avenue North, conditional use permit. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or input? Would Mark or his representative like to make any comments? Seeing none, I'll do it once more. Anyone in the audience have any questions or input? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, bring it back. Any final thoughts or questions from anyone? Then I look for a motion.
I will make a motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit for an oversized accessory structure at 1117 Greystone Avenue North.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next on the agenda is Glenn Brook's small area plan. Luke, I take it that Erin is going to do the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, Erin, welcome.
All right. Hi, nice to see you all. If we could get the presentation up on the screen, that would be helpful. The one from over here, oh, let me see if I need that. Let's try that.
There you go.
There we go. Wonderful. Yeah, so I'm here to give you an update on the Glenn Brook's small area plan and also discuss the three alternatives that we've developed that we are going to be taking out for public input. We would like to get your input on those as well. First of all, just a quick reminder of where we are in the process. We've done our background research, our initial stakeholders, interviews and engagement. We developed some goals and met with the city council to review those goals for the study. And now we're in phase three, which is developing alternatives and reviewing them with a lot of different groups, and you are one of the first that we are talking to tonight. Despite the fact that you're listed low on the list, we haven't done engagement on these alternatives yet, so engagement with the public, that will be coming up. Okay, so I believe you have all of these in your packet, correct?
No.
Okay.
It was emailed out, I did not print it myself.
Okay, but you got it, you got it in your email, and we'll, I can keep these on the screen as long as possible. This is just a depiction of what's going on right now in the neighborhood and a recap of the issues that we heard from our first neighborhood meeting. Basically, the biggest issue is truck traffic, and that's shown on that big black line there. Truck traffic conflicting with residential uses mainly on Upper 51st. There's sometimes on 52nd, but mostly it's on Upper 51st. Folks were, residents were very concerned about the noise, the debris, the safety for pedestrians of that truck traffic. They also talked about the lack of, there's a lot of people who walk in this neighborhood. I was a little bit surprised, given that, as you can see, there's a hodgepodge of land uses that are mixed together, so residential and commercial and industrial, but folks love to walk there. And so one of their concerns that they brought up frequently was the fact that the truck traffic creates unsafe situations for pedestrians. They also mentioned that there, a lot of the destinations where they go, parks and trails and whatnot, require crossing either 120 or going south and crossing 36 to get to the Gateway Trail, and there aren't safe ways to do that on foot. And so those are some of the things we heard when we initially started talking to people. And so when we began developing a set of alternatives that we could engage people on, there are really two main ways that we can address this conflict between truck traffic and the residential neighbors. One way is to change the land uses of some of the parcels so that truck traffic isn't traveling through residential areas, that change the land uses to commercial or mixed use or something like that. Or we change the way truck traffic flows. And so the alternatives I'm going to show you kind of take a few different angles on that. Okay, so the first one, which we're calling alternate A, is basically the option where we leave the street network as it is, we don't propose to construct any new streets. That blue line shows you the route that trucks tend to take right now, which shows trucks along Upper 51st. So that conflict between truck traffic and the residential uses on the north side and the south side of Upper 51st would remain here. We, in this alternative, we would suggest putting back the signage that was in the neighborhood that said no truck traffic on Upper 51st. There used to be signage, apparently when there was a street program or something, the signage was taken away and it was never replaced. So we would put that sign back up, have some interaction with the companies and the truckers using this area to get them not to drive on Upper 51st. They can access the highway up at the Hadley interchange, but for convenience, a lot of trucks travel to Century anyway. So this alternative would involve changing the future land use designation from residential to something else along Upper 51st. So those parcels outlined in yellow would change from either single-family residential or duplex, quadplex uses to either mixed use or commercial uses. So that's one way to solve the conflict. Before I move on to the next alternative, I want to stop and get some of your thoughts on this alternative. So I have a couple of targeted questions, but we could just open it up and...
Well, first question I've got is, I know there's an apartment building up there, where, is it in the purple that the apartment building is?
The apartment building is in the dark brown. So yeah, I know you're not looking at that right now, but it's right, the apartment building is right on Upper 51st. Yeah, my, it's that L-shaped building up there in the dark brown. Yep.
So it's on the south side of 51st?
Correct. Yep, that's East Gate Apartments. So one thing I'm going to ask is, in this alternative, it would, you know, kind of concede that but for some signage and some discussions to encourage them not to use Upper 51st, that conflict might remain. Do you think that that, how do you feel about leaving the road network the way it is?
At this point, why is it the trucker, I understand some convenience issues, but why is it the truckers don't go up through the roundabout?
That's a very good question. You know, we, during the first phase, we went out and talked to all of the, nearly all of the businesses in the neighborhood to ask them, you know, are you sending trucks this way, or what's going on? And they all say that they tell their vehicles not to drive that way, they also tell their deliveries not to come that way, but people still do. So that's really all I can say about it.
I'm thinking when all that happened, when they changed the signage, was when they put the roundabouts in there.
Oh, that could be.
And so they had actually routed it kind of up and around and through the neighborhood and by lumber and all through there. So that's probably, then they got used to doing that.
My recollection from the meeting was that people were saying it was during the resurfacing of the road up there, but again, I'm not positive.
That's, yeah.
Do we have a sense of kind of frequency and size of trucks? Because is it, is it a perceived issue or is it a true issue? You know, are these semis that are coming through here, is, you know, 10 times a day, or is it a box truck twice a week?
Right. That's a good question. We haven't done any observations or counts or anything like that. Mainly what we heard was that, you know, box trucks, people weren't concerned with, but there are semi trucks going through there and flatbed delivery trucks that have, you know, a lot of stuff that bounces around and sometimes falls on the road. How frequently, I don't know, because again, the businesses are saying that their vehicles should not be using that road at all. So they wouldn't say, oh, we have a truck a day coming in or whatever.
Erin, if I could add, just, we do have, you know, the ADT, annual daily traffic information that we could pull, but that's not going to differentiate between trucks, cars, you know, smaller vehicles. Yeah, so at this point, it's the observational data that's being reported to us from the residents.
But I absolutely, I mean, I absolutely understand why they're going that route if it's semis and flatbeds, because to get through those three roundabouts to get back onto 36, it's, one of them is hard enough to do three, is...
They'd actually only have to do two, because the one is up by Fleet Farm. So unless they're going north, they wouldn't hit that one.
Fair point.
But they are, those are very tight, nasty ones.
For a big truck, yeah.
I guess my general thoughts on this one, I am not a fan of this kind of forced rezoning on property owners and affecting their property rights. If you want to change, or if we want to change the comp plan and guide it to commercial, I have absolutely no problems with that, but I don't think we should be in a position where we come in and tell residential landowners, hey, we're going to rezone your land to commercial, and guess what, when you sell that, you're out of luck.
Right. And I don't think, we haven't discussed doing any proactive rezoning, so it would just be a change to the comp plan. Yeah, so other thoughts on whether changing the land uses is something that you'd be supportive of?
If the truckers are refusing to go the directed, the way the companies say they're directing it, I don't see that, you know, rezoning it, other than saying you're allowed to go there, is going to make any difference.
Okay.
I agree with you, Dallas. I think it's a, it's good long term, but you're not seeing any results for 20 years.
Yeah.
Other thoughts on this one? So in general, I'm hearing that if, you know, if this is the way that truckers are going to go without any changes to the road network, then changing the future land use designation isn't really a problem, or you'd be okay with it? Or is that what I'm hearing?
No, you're not.
No, you heard the opposite from him.
Opposite, yeah.
In agreement.
I think she was saying, though, just to change the comp plan.
Right.
But I think what we're saying is, I mean, I don't have a problem changing the comp plan, but I don't think it does anything. We don't see any results from that for decades, because it's going to take that long for that neighborhood to gentrify into a commercial use from the current residential.
If they're running semi install on their road, do we have a weight restriction on our roads there?
That is a good question, I'm not sure, do you know that?
It's just nine tons. I mean, I think that's standard throughout the city.
Okay. Okay, so is everybody kind of in general agreement with what Chris was saying? Okay. Very good. All right, and I'll just mention as I'm going through these that when we do engagement on these, we're not going to be asking people, you know, which one is their favorite, because we will probably end up with some sort of hybrid of options. So that's why I'm asking specifically about certain things. That's what we're going to do with the public also. All right, if there's nothing else on this one, then alternate B. As you can see, the main difference here is that the truck route would move down to 50th Street via, the dashed line would be a new frontage road that would be constructed right along the north side of 36. So in this instance, we would remove that land, that conflict between the truck traffic and the residential along Upper 51st, because the trucks would be going south of there. We would need new right-of-way to construct this road, and so that would need to be negotiated with the property owners there. There would still be truck traffic impacting just one residential property, and that's the one at 6240, it's right at the corner of Glenn Brook and 51st, but that one is hard to avoid in any of these options. So in this alternative, basically the solution is to make a big change to the road network, direct trucks elsewhere, and essentially leave the land uses as they are. And so curious about what your thoughts are on creating a new frontage road and the idea that we would, the city would need new right-of-way. Yep.
This one, in my opinion, is clearly a no-go, because until you've resolved what happens at that interchange, 50th Street in most of the scenarios goes away in terms of access to Century, 120, whatever it is up there. Because that's, they're going to put in the bridge, in theory, you've got four jurisdictions, they have to agree on all that yet, but all the scenarios I've seen, access from 50th or 250th is gone.
We've had some, been looking at some of the alternatives and have looked at them, and there would be room for a 50th Street access, but maybe we need to, we still need to go back and meet with MINDOT and verify all of that.
That's what I'm pointing at, because the ones I have seen in the past, admittedly, I haven't seen anything in two years now, but they were all, 50th Street, the access to it was going away, because the bridge was going to come right down on top of it. For, you know, for the slope.
Okay, we haven't heard that this time, but we will, obviously, anything we propose is going to have to work with that. And part of the idea is that, I mean, the city is going to be ahead of MINDOT when this study is done. Obviously, they're not going to be done with designing the interchange, and so we would be advocating for what the city wants to see there, so. But we'll definitely take a look at that. Let's set that aside for just a second, and if it could fit, what do you think of this alternative?
What type of businesses would we be acquiring right away from?
So the green parcels there right now are vacant. We, actually, staff met with the owner just this past week or last week?
Last week.
To kind of discuss this. Do you want to just give a brief, so that land is vacant, the owner's been looking to develop it for quite some time?
Yep, so this, what we're talking about is 6138 Highway 36 Boulevard North. It's that, the large gray parcel just north of the dashed line there. So that one's been vacant for a long time. They're actively marketing that piece, so I, because it's not, it's a green space piece right now, it's a lot easier to acquire right away as opposed to, you know, a business that's operating there. There is one property just to the northeast of that, it's the, I believe that's a Tice House.
Yeah, that red triangle there with the 6211.
That would require working with them, acquiring right away.
And I believe it's the same ownership for all three of those grayish-green parcels, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so we'd be working with two property owners. That light green parcel that's outlined in yellow is, there's a single-family home on there, it's vacant right now, and so likely what would happen is that that whole area would get developed some, they're looking at commercial, a variety of commercial or mixed use uses.
The service road wouldn't keep them from using a big chunk of that place where they're commercial, would it?
That's the idea, that it wouldn't, it wouldn't take up too much. I mean, we haven't designed it yet, but we know that the width wouldn't take too much, no. We would still be able to develop it, certainly, and I think the owners have been interested in doing something commercial there. They've just had issues with trying to figure out access.
That would probably work to their advantage then.
Right, right.
I would reserve my judgment until we know more about how this impacts 6211. You know, how much right-of-way is being taken, what's it do to their off-street parking requirements, how does that affect their business?
Mm-hmm.
You know, if it's a couple feet, it doesn't seem like it's a big deal, but...
This is the only one that's...
I think without that, it's hard to make a fully informed decision.
Whatever it was that you set the name for.
And we will be talking to them, so, yeah. When we come back next, we'll have an answer to that. Any other thoughts or questions on this one? You brought up some good questions that we need to follow up on, so. Okay.
I do know that those, the businesses that are along that park coming down 50th Street, quite often there are people parked on the street in front of the stores, so...
On-street parking on 50th?
Yeah, which, given what you're planning on doing, I don't know that there'd be room for any of that anymore.
Okay. All right, very good. And, okay, so the last one, as you might guess, is a little bit of a hybrid solution, where on the eastern part of Upper 51st, the truck traffic would still go that way, but then a new road would be constructed north-south, basically an extension of Gershwin, using some existing right-of-way that the city already owns. So in this, in this scenario, you wouldn't need any new right-of-way, we already have it, although we would still have some conflicts on that eastern segment of Upper 51st between trucks and residences. But it would solve the problem on the west half of the neighborhood. And again, this is also assuming that 50th would be the outlet, which we understand would need to be negotiated with MINDOT to make sure that that's feasible. But this is sort of a hybrid where you'd need to do some land, future land use change, those parcels on north of, on the north side of 51st that are outlined in yellow, but not as much of it. So we've got a little bit of land use change, we've got a new frontage road that uses existing right-of-way. So thoughts or concerns, questions about this idea?
In your prior maps, the dashed section was a gray, and there's also, on your map now, there's still a gray section that goes between, just to the south of the apartments?
Mm-hmm.
What is that gray area?
Yeah, that's right-of-way also, and we did, oops, we did explore using that right-of-way as a means to, for a truck route to get out a little bit farther north of 50th, so basically 50th and a half street there. What we learned was that that right-of-way is not large enough, and so, yeah. But we did, we did consider that, thinking that... And so, yeah, but we did, we did consider that, thinking that, well, if, if 50th doesn't work, maybe we move the access up halfway between and use that right of way. It would require, it, it would basically, to get enough width, we would be cutting through some of those existing buildings. They're quadplexes back there, those three parcels outlined in yellow. So unless those were purchased and, and taken down, that right of way is not wide enough. So this is sort of a, a hybrid. This one wouldn't require any negotiations with property owners, but still have some homes on that north side. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven parcels that would be impacted still by the truck traffic. Does this seem a little more palatable than this? Or does the thought of, the trade-off here is that, oops, here you wouldn't need any land use changes and here you would have some?
And that doesn't resolve any of the neighborhood, neighborhood problems with truck traffic coming through?
It resolves some, you know, diverting the trucks southward, but.
But you're still relying on the trucks to make
Yes.
that decision to, to make that turn.
That is very true, yes.
If I'm there, I'm just, I'm going the last block, yeah. I'd be curious to know how much traffic to those businesses, to the northeast there, come through this neighborhood and how much, you know, how much neighborhood traffic is, is through there? And I guess what I'm getting at is, is there an opportunity to just close that road? So you've got a, a dead end and, and you just are forcing trucks to use Hadley?
So basically closing Glenbrook at 51st so that trucks couldn't go through there and forcing them north.
Could you point out where the, the lumberyard and the landscaping gravel area?
Yeah, that's up in that, in that red triangle. Patio World is up there, so east of Glenbrook, north of 36.
The lumberyard is too?
Yeah, lumberyard.
Yeah.
Erin, do you want the blazer pointer?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks.
There was another business that they actually used.
Yeah, so the lumberyard and the garden place are right up in here. So yeah, that is an option. We did talk about when we were looking at alternate A, instead of just the educational stuff, but doing some sort of physical barrier so trucks could not get through and make that right-hand turn from Glenbrook onto Upper 51st.
There's no access to 36 anymore at, at that corner anymore. So that's why they're going. Can they reopen that? Would that be something that would be?
MINDOT, I could allow that one.
Okay.
We'll just sneak in there at, at night.
But that, but that just makes sense. I mean, then, then they would not have any of this neighborhood stuff because it's just a straight shot for all the businesses at that point. And it was probably used that way when it was open. Because I can remember when it was still there.
Probably.
For exiting, you couldn't get, you couldn't get, ones coming up from going east on 36 couldn't exit there, of course.
Right, it was just a going.
I, I would still, I think, reiterate that I think we need to do more to validate how much traffic we're talking about here. I'm not dismissing that it's a concern. If it's a concern to the neighbors, it's a concern. But is this, again, 50 trucks that we, we have to make a physical move? Or is it five in a week that we can really do some education with these businesses and some signage and things like that and, and make meaningful change that way?
Mm-hmm, that's a good question, and we can work on that. I will add that one of the things, well, one of the things that I was expecting to hear but did not hear from the public at that first meeting or through the online survey was really any other issues with the industrial businesses or the commercial businesses there. Like folks weren't concerned really about outdoor storage. They weren't concerned about like any sort of noise coming from the properties themselves. I think the folks that live up there, you know, is sort of, the idea was that they, they knew what was there when they bought their houses, and so it, it doesn't really concern them. It's the traffic that concerns them. We may hear something a little different when, in the next few weeks, we broaden the engagement and we talk to the neighbors to the north in the Gulfview neighborhood. I, I don't know that, but we'll see what they have to say. Yeah, so really the, the traffic.
I'm not sure I understand.
Whoa, my watch is listening to us. Yeah, it, it was, that was just interesting. So that's why our alternatives are kind of focusing on this.
If they do consider one of those physical barriers to just stop the trucks going, what's that do to fire response time in that area? Does that affect it at all?
Yeah, we would have to, we would have to check on that and see. Mm-hmm. Yeah, good question. Okay. All right, well, this was really helpful. I'll just show you what we're doing next. In the last week of April, we are looking at doing an in-person, another neighborhood meeting, this time at East Gate Apartments. We've been in touch with the manager. They have some outdoor space, so hopefully it will be warm enough by then that we can have a neighborhood meeting outside. We're also do, going to do a virtual public meeting that has a, a larger, really anyone in the city could come to that sometime the week of April 24th. We have an online survey that we are putting together that, that goes through these alternatives and asks some specific questions, so that will be available. We're targeting end of next week, and we'll leave that up for a little while. And then in addition to meeting with the Planning Commission, we're going to meet with the EDC and the Environmental Management Commission. I think staff are actually going to lead those, just to see if they have thoughts on this. And then once we get all of the input, we're going to take these back to City Council at the first week, first meeting in May. And then we'll talk about actually deciding on something. And we will be back to see you probably June.
One final thought, because I'm in agreement with these guys about possibly shutting down the traffic down there, truck traffic, reposting a weight limit that's at a more reasonable level for the neighborhood use. And at that point, depending on police going patrolling and ticketing, which often gives a huge deterrent.
Yeah.
That's, that's an alternative to barricading it.
Right, uh-huh.
You know, it's, it's a financial barricade more than anything else.
I, I will say from the, the staff perspective, we, we've kicked around that idea quite a bit. It is quite the administrative burden on, you know, enforcement. Realistically, how, how often could we do that? And then there's also concerns about just, you know, a lot of residents will need, they might need a, a large truck, you know, if they're moving, you know, they're moving in or moving out of the neighborhood. So it's, it can be, you know, a little tricky in terms of controlling what trucks go in and out of the neighborhood.
All right, well, thanks for, thanks for the conversation. I'll take all of this under advisement and research some of these issues and ideas a little bit further. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a planning and development update. Luke?
Yep, just a quick update about next month. I anticipate that we'll have a meeting, possibly two applications, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman or Incrison, got anything for us?
I have nothing.
Thank you, makes it brief.
We appreciate you sticking around for that update.
Well, I would like to have, I have a conversation I'd like to have with you, with all the snow that we've been having and everything. And the snowplows only going three feet from the curb. I think maybe we should rethink that instead. I understand the reasoning behind it. They're trying to save the, the cost of having the mailboxes being three feet's a long way. Could we compromise and go maybe one foot?
Well, it's my understanding, there were a lot of factors that went into how things were plowed during this last major storm. First of all.
This is an all-winter thing.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
I will, I will respectfully disagree with you. I think the plows have been pretty good all the winter. I will agree, though, that this was, this last one was bad.
They just changed this to three feet from the curb. And I think they really need to rethink that. I think they could compromise and go maybe one foot.
Now, on that, on that issue specifically, I know nothing about it, so.
But I'm just giving this to you to maybe think about this and talk to the people.
Yeah, and I do know that there's been a few issues with mailboxes that have been damaged, so.
I've lived here 20 years, and this is the first year they went three feet.
Yeah.
It was, it made the roads really miserable.
Yeah, there's going to be a.
Three different areas, because ours was done the same as all previous years up until this last one.
Mine was, ours has been three feet from the curb.
Yeah, and, and Lee, this might be, this is one of those situations that as an elected official, it's like competing interests, you know, the big tug-of-war back and forth. Go closer to the mailbox, hey, you wrecked my mailbox. Go, yeah, I mean, you know what I mean. It's, it's, and it's hard, it's so hard for these plow drivers. And I don't, and sometimes I don't know what the correct solution there is, you know.
Like I said, maybe there's a compromise there. They could go one foot, because we didn't get our mail half the time because the mail lady couldn't ma, couldn't deliver.
Yeah, that, no, that, that's, that's, that's definitely an issue.
That's, you know, that's something I heard about a lot on, on my street.
Okay.
And up, up 7th Street. See, I live on Glenbrook, Glenbrook Avenue over by, on Tanner's.
Yep, well, can you email me? And, yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll make sure it gets forwarded on and just, I'll.
I'm just saying, our people up on even on 7th Street, we all bought really expensive snow removal things like, you know, John Deere's. You go up and down and people have got all these big $20,000 John Deere tractors trying to get rid of the snow that the city is leaving three feet of. And it's a, it's a, you know, it's amazing. You would just, it's, people have gone crazy over it because it's, it is, it's bad. It's very, very bad. It was, but this was extremely bad here, I understand that. But we did have three feet and our roads were very narrow and it was an all-winter-long thing. I would say, oh, I'd say three or four weeks out of the year, we didn't get any, any mail at all because the mail lady just could not deliver.
Now, I will tell you this, Lee, that if them not plowing close to my mailbox means I'd get the okay at home to go buy a $20,000 John Deere tractor.
I saw a lot of the neighbors, I saw a lot of the neighbors, they had shiny red John Deere tractors. And we, I mean, you know, our, our lots are not that huge.
Yeah, no, all joking aside, no, if you, if you, yeah, if the mail's not getting delivered, that's an issue.
Yes, I'm surprised if the mail hasn't made issue with that.
Yeah, and I, I wish you'd have let me know that sooner. That's my only.
Well, it's over now, hopefully. It's over now.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and I don't know, I don't know their exact specifications as far as how they do it. If that's just on your street, I, I, I don't know, I, I can't speak to it at all, but.
Well, I, I, as some of the conversations I've seen on Facebook and whatever, it's, that's how it has come down, is they are saying it's three feet now.
Okay.
The way it's, it's.
Okay, and I don't, I don't know if that's the case or not. But email me and I will get you an answer straight from Public Works.
Sure.
Before you sit down, I have one other question. Can you give us a quick update on the Public Works and Police Department expansion? If you have anything.
Well, there isn't much right now. I haven't seen, I haven't read the email yet, but I did, I did get one today about some of the very specific, like the exterior texture and, we were, you know, there's, I mean, Chris, it's, you're, there's so many finite details. But I will tell you that we want to get going as quickly as possible. I do know that, you know, 3M is donating the land for the Public Works, or I, I shouldn't say donate, I think we're buying it for a dollar. So, and there are some remediation things that need to be done there. And Luke, can you speak to this at all?
I could, just a little bit. I believe that Public Works is getting pretty close to looking for a, a general contractor or a project manager for the site. The plan is to actually bring, bring the Public Works building, that's going to be the first project, through the, like, the approval process, so you'll actually see them at some point. And, and possibly some public input, engagement from the, the community, the neighborhood around that site. And then in terms of the, the police expansion, that's, that's going to be done after the Public Works building, so it could be a couple of years out, so.
Thanks, Luke. I, you know, I, I knew things were moving along on Public Works, but I wasn't sure exactly where we were in the process, so.
Sounds good.
Anything else?
I see nothing. Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
I ask for a move to adjourn.
No moves.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have adjourned.